Hi, good evening everyone and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting for the Chappaqua Central School District for Wednesday, September 25th. The Board is coming back from executive session where we were discussing matters of litigation, safety and security, and the employment of particular persons. Can I have a motion to come back into public session?
Okay, so move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the pleasure allegiance led by Kelly McCall.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I'll start with the President's report tonight. We're just coming in from honoring our newly appointed teachers, which was very lovely. We have a lot of wonderful teachers that are starting with our district this year, so I'm glad that we get to celebrate them, and I think everyone's children will be very happy with their new teachers. And I just want to say a special thank you to Tony and everyone else for bringing us such fabulous new staff members. A couple of items. Just give me a second. We had our last meeting on September 10th, so there have been a couple of things since then that I just wanted to bring up. I wanted to thank everyone involved with Community Day, which was on September 12th, which was very well attended. Such a wonderful day I find in Chappaqua with every -- we had members from the school board here, the PTA, a lot of community organizations. We always love when people come up to our table, and we did have a lot of people come up to our table and talk with us, and everyone was very well represented along with the farmer's market, so I think that was a terrific day. I also wanted to mention that the PTA held its, excuse me, fourth annual speed interviewing night at Greeley on September 19th, and that was run by Kelly Mofield. I really want to thank Kelly for that. I know it was a really successful night to give the juniors and seniors some interview skills as they move into getting jobs and internships, and I just wanted to note that I was actually stopped by one of the parents in town who volunteered to be one of your interviewers and was really struck by how eloquent and poised and intelligent all the students were, and this parent was very happy to be involved, so a big thank you for that. I think it was very successful. I also want to note that the Board of Ed and Christine Ackerman just returned from our annual Board of Ed retreat. We were there for about 24 hours from Monday to Tuesday and up at Mohawk, and we spent a lot of time discussing our Board of Ed goals for the year. We did some team-building activities, which were very helpful, and I think all of us walked away with some really great ideas in terms of how we better communicate with each other, how we can enhance our communication with the district, and so we want to thank Christine for organizing that. And also thank John Chambers, who was an interim superintendent here a while back, a former superintendent in other districts. He has been our guide throughout this and our moderator the last couple of years, and was very helpful. So, a big thank you there. We've had a bunch of our open houses already in all of the schools. Tomorrow night is Greeley Open House here at 7:00 PM, so we look forward to seeing a lot of the parents in our new spaces and meeting the new faces and all the new teachers. I think we have finished up most of the schools, except perhaps the middle school like 7 and 8 at Seven Bridges and Bell, which is --
Greeley Thursday.
Greeley Thursday, right, and then next week. And we will be closed Monday and Tuesday for the Jewish holidays. And that's it, except that I do need during this President's report to add a couple of resolutions that we're going to be voting on later. So, I'm going to read those now, and then we'll deal with them later as they come up throughout the evening. First is, sorry, let me get my glasses. This will be item, let me make sure I have it. 5.5, as we discuss later, CCSD bid number B2019-19 resolution, whereas the Board of Education, in accordance with Article 5A of the General Municipal Law, invited sealed builds for football helmets, and whereas the bids were open publicly on September 23rd, 2019, and two bids were received, whereas an evaluation was made of the proposed football helmets by Jason Simo, Athletic Director, John Chow, Assistant Superintendent for Business, and Michael Trinick, District Purchasing Agent, and it was determined that the bid submitted by Riddell/All-American was not in compliance with the bid specifications, and that the proposed Riddell helmets did not meet the requirements that the helmets met the highest safety rating based on the STAR evaluation system. Therefore, be it resolved, upon the recommendation of Mr. Simo, Mr. Chow, and Mr. Trinick, that the Board of Education hereby determines that failure of Riddell to comply with the bid specifications as described above constitutes a material deviation from the bid specifications and therefore rejects such bid as unresponsive, and be it further resolved that upon the recommendation of Mr. Simo, Mr. Chow, and Mr. Trinick, that the Board of Education, in the best interest of the school district, hereby awards the bid for football helmets to Vycus Inc. as the lowest responsible bidder responsive to the bid specifications as stipulated in the bid documents for CCSD bid number B2019-19 at the cost of $30,660. And then, an additional item that will be on the agenda tonight will be 5.6. Be it resolved that the Board of Education is hereby authorized, I'm sorry, excuse me, be it resolved that the Board President is hereby authorized to issue letters to the parents of students number 602342, number 602341, and number 701049 regarding a matter considered by this Board during executive session at this meeting. And that will be up as item 5.6, and that is the President's report.
Thank you, Jane. So, I also wanted to extend my welcome to all of our new faculty, and we are absolutely grateful for the PTA for sharing a small token tonight as they introduce themselves to the Board of Education for the first time. It was great to hear their first impressions. They were wonderful to hear their, like, to understand their experiences at the building level, and it was certainly an affirmation of the caliber of candidates that we've selected, as well as the caliber of students that attend our schools and our communities. So, this is always a great evening for us to really be able to celebrate our new people a month after they've come onboard. As Jane had mentioned, we've been welcoming our families to back-to-school nights, and we will continue to do so in the next two weeks. And there have also been opportunities for our parents to see our new spaces, and Adam and Josh just co-hosted an event with the STEAM PTA Committee last week where we had parents interacting with some of our new learning tools in Seven Bridges. So, we look forward to showing our parents Greeley, the L Building tomorrow, and how we're leveraging that for instruction here in our district. So, tonight, Dr. McCarthy will be sharing with you our comprehensive guidance plan. New York State adopted new regulations requiring all districts to have a comprehensive counseling plan at the start of this year that provided access to our elementary students to a counselor, but they didn't define that clearly for districts on how to implement that unfunded mandate. So, Heidi will be talking a little bit about that tonight, and this work was the byproduct of a larger committee of people personnel services representatives. So, I'm happy to have Heidi share with you the work that they did over the course of last year. And Adam and Tony will present after Heidi's concluded our annual summer professional development work to the community. And I also wanted to share with you that a team of teachers and administrators from across our district have been invited to present to the Regents on October 7th, and they'd like us to share with them some work that we've been doing academically in our innovative spaces, some of our personalized learning, and some of our project-based instructions. So, we're really excited to be able to head to Albany in two weeks, and then we will be sharing with the Board of Education at our second meeting in October, our presentation that we shared with the Board of Regents. So, with that, Heidi, I'd like to welcome you tonight to present to the Board our comprehensive guidance plan.
All right, so, good evening, everyone. So, I'm presenting to you something different than special education this evening, so it feels a little odd and a little exciting at the same time. As you know, beginning in July, I assumed additional responsibilities under my new title with counseling, with guidance, as well as nurses and physicians, and both came at a time where there were changes to laws and regulations, making the work very exciting at this point in time. So, what Christine said is accurate in that there have been amendments to the regulations around guidance and the role of guidance counselors in the school districts that have really pushed us to look at how we're providing services to our students K-12 and really looking at the scope and sequence. So, as you may recall, a few years ago, I spoke to you about some of the work that the Student Support Plan Group was doing, and that was at a time when we knew that this was coming, but we hadn't received any guidance about what it would look like. And so, we had developed goals and action steps toward those goals. When we looked at it this past year, some of those goals were really focused more on what we needed at that time in our district and our community, and we had done a lot of work since that time in certain areas. And so, this forced us to really look K-12 at how we were providing supports for our students academically, within the social-emotional realm, as well as career and preparation for life after high school. It's also, the timing is great because it's very much in alignment with our strategic plan within the district, so we're really looking at aligning what we're doing K-12, and so this fits right in there. So, I did provide to you information with regard to the regulations, not for me to read it to you at this point in time, but for just for you to have the background with regard to that. And as in many things that we see with the State Education Department, you know they're coming to all of the districts throughout the state, and so districts that have very different student populations, very different level of resources than we do here in Chappaqua, so it's really trying to equalize, I believe, for all students within the state to have access to those that can prepare them for life after graduation. And so, in looking at the school counselor as being a critical component into all of that, I'll also say that as we go and look at this plan this year and in future years, it's not just guidance. So, we've brought in members of the people personnel team. There's components of this that are embedded in health and what's taught in health and in physical education and in the classrooms. So, when you're looking at this, the focus isn't, this is what our guidance counselors are doing, this is really what the district is doing, and we're all pulling together on behalf of the students. So, there are several components to the new regulation. What I'm mainly charged with tonight is sharing with you the plan, which you will receive ahead of time, and I know that it's a pretty lengthy and comprehensive document, but however, you know, the regulations for us are stating that we do need to have a comprehensive and developmental school counseling and guidance program for our students K through 12. I will also say that Chappaqua, like all of other districts, in the county and in the state, this is the first year. This is our first build of this, and what it's really giving us an opportunity to do is to put down in writing all those that we are doing for our students now, and then to take the opportunity throughout the year and yearly to look at this and to continue to build and develop it. So, you will see a report on this at the end of the year, and then next year, as we continue to build this plan. Within the regulations, there's also, districts have to ensure that all students in grades K through 12 have access to a certified school counselor. However, that does not mean that districts have to hire school counselors for the elementary years, and I'll explain a little further on how we're addressing it for this year. But again, like many other school districts, we will be looking at this, taking data and making a determination how we are providing this information to our students and whether we will, down the road, make recommendations to have school counselor at the elementary level. And our goal is really to prepare our students for the future, as I stated. Again, this plan is to be reviewed annually and to build programs in conjunction with school counselors at all of the grade levels. And again, that it's designed for the purpose of preparing our students to participate in their current educational program and future educational program by providing them with supports and the information that they need to do so. Another component to this plan is that for students in grades 6 through 12, the school counselors are going to be providing an annual individual progress review plan. This, for students who have IEPs, Individual Education Programs, this will be in addition to that, which is going to reflect their progress toward their career plans, so that's a new component to this. And this plan is kind of globally looking at college and career readiness, as well as their academic skills, as well as their social-emotional development, and by a certified school counselor and other members of the faculty involved in that. So, again, it's very much in alignment with so much of what we're doing with regard to ruler and the social-emotional work that we're doing, with regard to looking at how we're looking at students' academic progress, how we're looking at response to intervention, and all of those areas. Like I said, it's really kind of pushed us or forced us, as other districts, to really look at how we're assessing our students and their progress, identifying students who may need additional support. So, as I said before, with this team, this group started with the Student Support Plan Team and then morphed into the team that created the plan that you have for review. Again, we had all of the school counselors, and we had all of the psychologists and all of the social workers as part of it, and then team members went out and accessed information from other constituents and brought it back to the group. We met several times for very long days, and then there were a team of individuals who worked kind of toward the end to bring it all together, one of them being Rosa Amendola, who happens to be in our audience tonight. So, I thank those who worked very hard on this plan. This plan will be available for review at the district office, and we'll put it on the website. And again, this is our first year of the plan, and it will be updated. So, these are, this is kind of our table of contents, where the components of the written plan that you have in front of you, and how the plan is broken out is by certain areas, and then in alignment with the American Schools Counseling Association, their mindsets and behaviors, as well as New York State Education Department's CEDOS standards. And then there are areas of focus within the plan with regard to academic support, college and career development, social-emotional development, and parent engagement. And again, what I'll say is that when we were building this, we were really started with, what are we doing now? We didn't have that down in a written document. We had a lot of information on what people were doing, by bringing it all together, bringing the team, K-12, all together and saying, oh, this is what we're doing. Oh, you're doing this? This is how we're doing it at the lower grades? Oh, what a -- and that cross-conversation was so powerful for all of the levels to really understand kind of where it starts and where it ends and how everybody is connected. And so, yes, we came up with a document, but the start of that conversation that will continue, I think, is the greatest benefit of all of this, is really seeing that alignment, and while looking at it, also looking at pockets or holes and where we need to fill in and where we need to add additional supports. So, with regard to the school counselor access, so for this year, we're providing access to our little ones at our elementary schools in two ways. With regard to the career and the career readiness, our high school counselors are actually looking forward to creating a career day for the students in going in to the schools and providing them with information about careers and things that students may want to start thinking about doing in their future. Our middle school counselors will, are being assigned to certain grades and certain classes to be available to support students on an as-needed basis. So, for example, through the RTI process, if there are questions or concerns about how a student may need to be supported, we can have a middle school counselor be part of that conversation. As I said before, we also have ruler that we're bringing in now K through 12 throughout our district. Looking at our community and careers, you know, our social studies curriculum has so much in there. Kindergarten is all about community, and starting with communities, so it's really, again, building on what we're already doing and identifying ways to strengthen it. So, this is what I just said about the middle school counselors.
So, can I just add, just to clarify a statement here? So, we have psychologists in every elementary school. A lot of districts do not have that level of support, which is why we feel comfortable providing access in this way. Other districts and some of my colleagues were there having trouble grappling with the mandate, is that they didn't have any staff available to the students at the elementary level to support kids with emotional, social-emotional needs unless they were assigned to that specific caseload due to IEP services. So, we're structured a little bit differently here, so that's why we felt comfortable providing this model for our district, where other districts may be considering hiring someone part-time, hiring someone full-time, contracting out with BOCs. We don't feel at this time we need to do that because of the unique way we have been able to support our kids within their current structure. So, go ahead, Heidi, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, that's okay. Appreciate it. Okay, so I've spoken about that. So, one other component of this is an advisory council with representative stakeholders, and the membership is to be determined by the district. I will offer the invitation out now. We would love to have one board member on our advisory council, so call me or email me, because we really would like your input as well. The advisory council is to meet at least twice a year and to review the data, to make suggestions for revisions. So, like I said, this is a living document that we will continue to add to. I'm quite proud that the entire department, departments came together to do this, especially because the counseling department was not, was not a department in entirety. You know, we had the high school, and then we had the middle schools, kind of three separate departments. Now, we've really pulled together. This has helped us to pull together and really look at our work. And then, upon review, our charges to create and submit an annual report to the Board of Education. That was kind of a quick run-through.
No. So, I just, I want to add a few more things. So, first of all, thank you, Heidi, for presenting this and for the work that the team has done over the course of the year as we try to, what happens when State Ed passes regulations is that they're vague enough to give you enough latitude to make it fit your district, but they're specific enough where you have to do certain things to make sure you're complying with what they are requesting all districts to do. So, this is one of those situations. So, we have to think about, in our current program, we have our classroom teachers, our core teachers at the elementary school, they're already doing career education, mostly with through their civics and through their history program. All of our teachers are being trained on, mark brackets, social-emotional learning ruler program over the course of this year. So, a lot of the instruction that the regulations articulate need to be happening in our elementary programs are being delivered through our classroom teachers, and that's the way that we would want it to be because the reinforcement is there. So, we're trying to come up with a model that we think will work, which will also help us with our K-12 alignment, because we know that's one of our strategic initiatives, but we also understand that it's not perfect, and it's not going to be perfect in other districts. So, what the, what the regulations require us to do, which would be good practice anyway, is to evaluate our thinking and our, and our work over the course of the year with our secondary folks supporting our elementary folks, to see if there's something different we need to do, something we need to enhance, or is this really meeting our needs and making our program better? So, that's, I think, where we are, based on our experience over the course of last year with our K-12 PPS staff and their best thinking to try to work within the parameters of what we already offer and our staff that we already have, to make sure that we're providing some of the regulatory requirements that are good practices for elementary students anyway. So, we just, you know.
That probably pretty much sums it up.
Yes, excellent. Thank you.
Are there any questions that maybe Heidi can answer for you as someone who is knee-deep in this for the course of the year?
I had a question, whether this is something that we did before when you, one of the components of the regulation was for students in grades 6 to 12 that certified school counselors provide an annual individualized progress review plan. So, is this something that's normally done? Do parents access that? Is this brand-new? Like, that does seem cumbersome, like, and how is that going to be accomplished? I was curious how we can integrate that into what we're doing.
One of the things that, for me being new in this position, I'm fortunate to be within a group of other directors of PPS or directors of guidance who are trying to figure this out at the same time and sharing good practices. So, for example, Adam shared a template from his previous district that we could use for this plan. People are trying to come together and share, so at this point, districts are sharing with each other what that plan would look like. We have not landed on what that plan is going to look like. It's good practice for counselors to know their kids.
Right.
It's good practice for counselors to know what their goals and aspirations are for what they want to do in the future. So, it's also good practice to have a means by which that information can be shared year for year, especially if a faculty member's no longer here and that information is shared. So, we're looking at ways to make that to be meaningful conversations and not have the requirement be cumbersome, but actually meaningful and doable and manageable for the counselors.
Okay.
If I could jump in, although it's an individual progress plan, it can be done, the regulation says in small groups as well.
That was my next question. Like, is it part of a group counseling thing?
At the middle school and the high school, pulling small groups of students, and they'd all leave that group with an individual plan, but we can kind of work with them in small groups depending on the kind of number of counselors, the number of students, and how we're going to structure it at the different grade levels, but it's a divergence from the current practice, but I think it's kind of interesting and thought-provoking with regard to how we support students and then communicate that support to parents.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question that's related, actually, to the exact same provision, which is, these reports, is the intent for them to be internal reports, that these are reports that are, you know, shared with the administration and that they'll have for the kids for the next year, or are these something that the parents will access as a matter of course, that they'll be provided to for the parents, or something the parents can access if they want to, but won't be provided sort of as a matter of course?
My understanding is, and Adam, correct me if you've heard something different, my understanding is that the purpose is for internal, but it's good practice to share with parents and to have those conversations with parents, especially related to students and their, and their plans to transition and to move on. So, I would think that when we establish the practice and kind of finalize to what it's going to look like, that there should be a component in there where that information is shared in some way with the parents.
I have a related question when it comes to the parents. Reading through the report, which, it was obvious how much work went into gathering all that information and putting it in one place, so really appreciate that. The section on parent engagement, there was not as many references to the parents in that section as I would have expected. Is there anything that you were thinking, oh, that kind of jumped out at you in that, in that line with the engagement of the parents that we might be looking at changing?
I think one of the things that jumped out at me and others when we were working on the plan is how interrelated those different sections are, so how difficult it was to separate things, to say this is just parents, or this is just academic, or this is just social-emotional. So, when you look through the plan, there are also references to parents' participation in other parts. I'll also say that as we go through with the advisory council and look at it and have input, parental input into this, we're certainly going to be looking at other ways to either add to our current practices and program, or include something in here that we are already doing but didn't make it into the plan. But absolutely, in all areas, including parent participation.
Thanks.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah. In addition to that, was there anything else that did jump out at you as maybe some gaps or errors? gaps or areas that you want to focus on sooner? Or is that kind of the job for the advisory council, as you go first?
I think it's the job for the advisory council, everybody together, as well as those that are kind of living and working and breathing through the plan and seeing, you know, was something left out that we do, was something left out that we're not doing now, especially with that cross-building conversation between the counselors at the different buildings. I think those conversations will get stronger as well.
We were able to identify those areas of focus. So the four that we identified were academic support, college and career development, social-emotional learning, and parent engagement. Those were our four choices, and so within those categories, we have, you know, things that we've identified as areas of strength and other things that we think we could probably do better. I think those four will probably stand. I think I'd be, I'd be surprised if something else came out that we missed through this whole process, but I think within that, there's a lot of work that we can potentially do to dive into those kind of subdescriptors within those larger categories.
So I have a few questions. One of them is specific and the others are a little broader. So in the career, you know, career development area, regarding the very young students, you know, the K through, the elementary school students, I'm just curious about how you handle a career component for children who are so young, and how that might affect them developmentally? Because, you know, one of the purposes of education is to develop a love of learning. We want to develop informed, active participants in our society for our democracy. And so we, you know, I have problems with the state standards focusing on education merely as a vehicle for career and college readiness. There's so much more to education than that. I'm concerned about teaching them at a young age that they're here to plan a career. And they're only five years old, some of them. I mean, what are we doing? Is this a mandate by the state that would require this?
Right, so it's interesting you're asking it in that way. So the state doesn't tell you how to do it, it just tells you you need to. So, for example, we do a local government in our elementary program where kids are exposed to different aspects of our community, community service. So, you know, talking to a fireman, talking to a policeman, I mean, or woman, that's a part of our program already that would connect to the regulatory requirement. I think what we're suggesting though is we can expand that to be better, and the way that we can expand it to improve is by leveraging our guidance councils at the secondary level to support that work in our elementary program that currently exists and enhance it.
So can I ask, so when they learn about, let's say, police, police and fire, police and fire department, do they learn that that's just part of our community? You know, or do, you know, do they approach it as a career?
Can I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
So in kindergarten, one of the interesting things is that they start with themselves in social studies, and then they go through their, them being a member of a community as their classroom. And then they make that larger, and they think about their class as part of a community that's a school. And then they broaden that as the school is part of a larger community, right, this Chapokwaw community. And they do some work with students around this idea of themselves and their fit in this kind of larger community. And then they do just some very basic career exploration about helping jobs in the community. For example, there are teachers and there are firefighters and police officers and things like that. So it's, it's less of a career exploration and more of just kind of a perspective of that we're each individuals as part of this kind of larger connection and community that is our classroom and that is our school. And there's even some behavioral pieces of how to behave in a way that supports the building of community, things like that. I think the other layer of that is like the visits that we're probably even familiar with as students. So you could have a firefighter come in, or a police officer come in, or a local dentist come in, or an architect, or, you know, in some cases, we lean on our parents and other experts. And sometimes they're done as assemblies, sometimes they're done as class visits. A lot of that is also taught through our literacy programs, so they'll read books about various careers and things like that. So there isn't a heavy push for kids to start to decide, although you can ask them all, and they'll tell you what they'd like to do when they grow up. There isn't a heavy push to get them to commit, or even think seriously about that at that age, but that builds over time.
Right, it's interesting, because we talk a lot in this district about innovation, and that we don't know what the careers of tomorrow will even be, and that we're preparing them for that.
That's right.
And in attempting to adhere to these state standards, we're sort of doing an about-face on that and talking about fire, police, and, you know, it's such a limited view of what they can do in the world. So I just find that very conflicting. And we know that they'll be, these kids will graduate from high school in 1932, the kindergartners. We don't even know what world they'll be, you know, getting into. So I just hope that we can do this in a very broadening way, in a way that broadens their minds, and, you know, maintain some integrity in the concept of education and why they're in school. Because I do think, you know, when we have the anal experts come, everyone wants to go home and be an anal expert, you know? I mean, that is the nature of the elementary school students. So we also don't want the kids not to want to be superheroes, you know? So we have to try to balance out, you know, who they are as young people, little people in our, in our... So, but I believe one of the benefits of the way we've structured our plan is that there'll be a lot of people around the table talking about these issues and making decisions on how to move forward. And then we'll always revise where we are at the end of the year, and make adjustments based on our experiences. But that's great feedback, Vicki, that Heidi can share directly with the committee.
Okay. And just to add, to add and to reiterate something, I don't think that the purpose, and certainly it wouldn't be our purpose, to put pressure on our little ones to say, you know, these are careers and that's why you have to do well in school. I think that one of the purposes of this is, again, for those who are working with the students to make that alignment, make that connection at some point, right? So at some point in a student's career, they're making that connection that, oh, I saw their school career, oh, I saw that, that's something that I would like to do. And that's why it's important for me to learn and to explore and to work in groups and all of that. So it's making that connection. The purpose, I don't think, is to put pressure on our students of kind of having to figure out what they want to do in their lives earlier.
Okay. And also, so I have some broader questions. So we're talking about this plan that we're going to continually analyze and assess to make continual improvements on. And I'm just wondering how you would identify the areas in need of improvement, and what, how do you identify what the relevant metrics are, and how would you track them?
Right. I think that's all going to be work of the advisory council to identify that when they, when we first meet. You know, we're formulating a group at this point in time to identify that, and then my thinking would be to have different members of the council focus on different areas and then bring that back. It would be the most manageable.
Right, because I'd like to know how to assess how this is working and what changes need to be made, so that when you come back to us, you can show us those metrics and show us exactly how, how those improvements are and what those, the gaps may be. And in terms of the resources for the counseling department, have you looked at that in terms of what they might need? Are their resources sufficient?
I have not been given an indication at this point in time that the resources are not sufficient. I think that this district is very fortunate with the resources that we have in the school. And so there's been no indication at this point in time that resources are going to be an issue. But again, that is something that we'll be looking at throughout the year and bring back to if we feel that that is, becomes an issue.
Right. I'm also thinking in terms of technology, because we've been focused on the use of technology in the classroom, so I'm wondering if the counseling department has the right technology, and if we're keeping up with best practices in that area and current trends? And are we comparing ourselves to other public schools, or would we compare ourselves to private schools or colleges in terms of what's available to our counselors? Do you know if we've looked at that, the technology, that is accessible?
Yeah, I do know that we, for our student management system, we use Infinite Campus, and for our counseling department, we use Naviance, which as far as I know is the premier counseling software suite used by the whole region. I don't know of any other even competitors in that field. We could certainly look into that, but I haven't heard any, any concerns with regard to the counseling department, and I know that most of the region, if not all of the region, uses a Naviance suite when it comes to tracking college, college process, college applications, things like that.
Right, right. Okay, I just want to make sure we're keeping up with the trends in the industry and how we track that.
Yes.
And also, I guess my last question is, how do we, have we been measuring the efficient use of time with our counselors? Because obviously their time is at a premium, and there are many students, and now these are, you know, the requirements are even greater. So how do we assess their use of time and how to make that more efficient?
Yeah, and these are really good points. Like I said, this is, this is my first year, you know, with this, in this position and looking and meeting with the counselors, and these are, this is all information that I think that needs to be gathered and looked at in greater detail. I'm certainly making note of all of the things that you want us to look at this year. I don't have the answers for you yet, early in the school year, but it's certainly something that I can report back to you.
Time for positions like counselors is so challenging because of the way the program flows. So at any given point in the year, you know, as you can imagine, the end of August is very different from the first couple weeks of September, which is very different from, you know, November, December, just the ebb and the flow, and those of us that have gone through the college process, for example, know that. So it's a challenge. They have a lot of discretion with regard to how they use that time and how they apply it. So there's some times where they're back-to-back with student meetings, and then there's other times where they're setting up, you know, kind of backend paperwork systems to get college applications out and things like that. So they have a lot of discretion over their time, not unlike the other clinicians, school psychologists, social workers, administrators. It's unlike a teacher schedule where we, you know, block out their time and their day for them, so they have lunch and prep and daily periods. So it's a lot more flexibility. I don't, I don't know of any metrics that we're using right now to track time. It would certainly be interesting to look at where they are spending the bulk of their time.
Because one of the things that, one of the things that we do here over time is that students feel they, they don't have enough time. With their counselors, it's hard to schedule appointments, and they end up spending the most time when they're in their junior, senior years, and not as much time in the freshman and sophomore years. And this is just high school. So time seems to be very scarce and at a premium, and I'd like to know how, how we can address that.
I do know that the counseling department and the high school has looked at their schedules and their meetings, and the amount of times that they were meeting together as a group, and really streamlined that process so that the information that can be shared kind of electronically through emails or a memo is done that way, and so that their meetings are purposeful with, you know, a clear agenda to enable the counselors to have more time to work with students rather than time together in meetings. So I know that's one area that, that the department chair and facilitator of the department have worked very closely together and structured their meetings differently this year. In previous years, my understanding is they had many more meetings during the week as a group coming together, and they felt that some of that, the time that was spent in those meetings could be information sharing in different ways, so that when they were coming together, it was for, with a purpose and an agenda. And then, I was at a meeting the other day, and it was like the agenda was there, done, okay, back to work.
Right. So what you're describing is something that the counseling department does. So what I'm talking about is how the administration assesses these different aspects of the job and the role, you know, in terms of resources, time, et cetera. So, yes, I suppose they would do that, but I'm talking about at a higher level. How do you track that? How do you develop the metrics, like I was saying, to assess that, and to perhaps support them in that process?
So I will certainly work alongside the administration in the buildings, and the administrators that have been supporting the counselors to this point in time, and looking at that and developing metrics with which that we can track that and follow that.
I'd also like to say, if kids are saying that they can't come in to see, get in to see their guidance counselor, I want to understand why that is.
Yeah.
So I think we need to start there. You know, what is happening that our kids are feeling like they don't have access, if that is in fact true? So we have to talk a little bit about getting information from our kids real-time from each grade level to see who is having an access problem and why the access problem is existing, and then we can start to tackle it.
Yeah, I think the feedback loops are important, knowing how we, how we get information and how then we act upon it is important.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah.
Oh, actually, I have more. Do you mind?
Go ahead.
I just, Heidi, we talk about making sure that the kids are developing a meaningful adult connection in the buildings, and I just was wondering if, as you're going through this year, if you're thinking about how you're going to see if that's happening, similar to what Vicki was asking about metrics and when you report back, what is, what does that monitoring sort of look like?
At the, at the different building levels, it looks differently. And certainly with the implementation of Ruler in the different buildings at the different stages, with Greeley being further along than the middle schools and now the elementary schools, it's, it's taken a different look. But for example, at Greeley, I know that they are doing more sessions with students kind of in an advisory model to bring students together in a greater connection with an adult. I know at the middle school, they're also working through a similar model of advisory to connect students together and students to adults. At the elementary school, you know, those connections are there almost naturally because they're with a teacher full day. It's a smaller environment, and, and just by the design of an elementary school, I think those connections are more natural and organic than at the middle schools and the high schools. But I know both of the different levels are working on ways within their building levels to make those connections happen. Again, it's, it's more kind of coming from the ground up in the buildings than kind of through this plan at this point in time.
So I'd just like to add, we have baseline survey data at Greeley, and then we have focus group data at all the elementary schools and the middle schools regarding adult student connections. So I think probably at the conclusion of next year, we should repeat that process and see if there's been any growth.
Yeah, thank you.
Lauren?
Okay. What's the timeline to get this done, and when will you report back to us?
So the advisory committee or council is going to meet twice this year. I would say the first time before the end of the first quarter, and then toward the end of the school year. And I believe the report back is September the following year, so around a year from now.
So we don't have a set timeline yet?
So before the end of the...
First quarter?
First quarter, at the end of the school year, and then in, in September, whenever it's on the board, you know, whenever the board puts it on their calendar.
Okay.
Okay, thank you Heidi.
Thank you Heidi.
Okay, now I'd like to introduce Adam, who will lead the summer professional work presentation.
All right, so this is our professional learning update. Now it's my second annual professional learning update, so I'm excited to give it. I feel like our new teachers were the best, like promotion slash commercial for the whole thing. It was really neat to hear how excited they were to receive some of the professional development that they got over the summer, and we will highlight some of that. I do want to say that I'm really fortunate to have a terrific professional development team. Josh is a member of that team, Heidi's a member of that team, and then we have five professional developers, and Jamie Edelman is also one of the director members of that team. And in addition to our PD team, we've got a lot of strong support from the administrators, the building leaders, and many of our educators who lean in, teachers, clinicians, counselors who lean in and offer symposium sessions and learning teams. So I really get to report on the good work of a whole group of people that support the professional learning in the district. So this is, I'm just the, I am the messenger and a proud leader of this, of this professional development team. So let me, let me go through just a couple of highlights from our summer. I do want to tell you that although we are going to race through several of the experiences that we offered to kids, the real foundation of this still rests on the board's strategic questions, our vision and goals for teaching that have been around for a number of years, our profile of a Greeley graduate, which we added a little over a year ago, and then the district priorities, which you've heard before around curriculum articulation, assessment practices, social-emotional learning, technology to personalized learning, those five priorities. So that's, those are really the foundational core components of what we build all of our professional development systems on. I thought it would be neat to put in this graphic, 10 Things That Teachers Want With Professional Development, and to highlight just a few. What they're really looking for is innovative, practical, professional... What they're really looking for is innovative, practical, professional development that will stretch their current practice and their thinking and applies to their real classroom so they can bring it back and they can use it with our students in real time. So that's the kind of professional development that we try to create. We try to create professional development experiences that allow them to connect with other educators, not only potentially across town or even in a classroom across the hall, but also around the region. We also like to bring in experts when we can, authors when we can, to push our thinking around teaching and learning. Again, we like to offer our teachers a lot of voice choice and empowerment so they have options in where they want to grow, all aligned with our priorities as a district. So we did a little work on rebranding the professional development offerings last year. This was a document, the Save the Date document went out in the winter of last year where we shared the dates of our mini-conferences. And then we have on the right side kind of our vehicles that we use for professional development, and you're familiar with many of them, I'm sure, things like in-service teams or in-service classes, learning teams, institutes, forums, retreats. I know you've even participated in some of those things. We have author visits, experts, we'll talk more about those as we go through the presentations. But this is a little bit of the branding of the team and also the vehicles that the team uses to provide professional development. Tried to go through most of these chronologically. We kicked off the summer on June 27th with Basecamp. I know you've heard a little bit about that. That was exciting for us because we pushed our thinking around different structures to provide professional development, and we invited the whole region. So this was an open conference for any educators. We had over, well over 100 people attend, about half from Chappaqua and half from over 25 different school districts in the region. Many of those innovators from other districts came in and presented at symposium sessions and shared their thinking and their best work from their district. So it was a nice opportunity to cross-pollinate ideas around the region.
So we also went on our administrative retreat this summer when we went to Boston. We got to go to MIT, and we got to go to Microsoft Nerd Labs. Sounds as nerdy as the title, it was pretty fun. I think the exciting part of our administrative retreat was that it was very much anchored in the district priorities and even the skills and attributes that we think about with our graduates. We were collaborating, we were thinking critically, we were talking about space, the spaces that we saw, both at the Nerd Lab and at MIT, were just really, they affirmed the direction that we are going in as a district and also reaffirmed our commitment to the design thinking process and how that presents itself in the classrooms.
So when we got back from our administrative retreat, we jumped into steam.welcome. The intention of steam.welcome was to get our secondary educators ready to open up our steam spaces. So we actually had steam.welcome at our Seven Bridges Steam Center, and we had invited our science teachers, math teachers, technology teachers, art teachers, gave them an introduction to the space over at the Seven Bridges Steam Center. And that steam center is a model of what Bell will look like, and then Greeley eventually, when we have the steam building here open. So we had teachers from both middle schools and also the high school using that equipment there. Have a couple of slides showing you pictures. We had a physics and art example where we had a pendulum painting machine, just as an example for the teachers to experiment with. All of these things were activities that they could apply in their classrooms. Then we transitioned from steam.welcome to steam build. Steam build was the kind of more advanced version of that. We had 22 participants in steam build, and we got into some of the more technical software. So we taught teachers how to use Tinkercad, how to use Adobe Illustrator, how to use a laser cutter, the CNC router, some of the other more technical devices. You can see from those pictures in steam build, the teacher task was to design and build a piece of flexible furniture that they'd like to have in their classroom. And so that steam build time was spent with teachers applying a real design thinking process to a fabrication model of a piece of furniture that they'd like to see in their classroom. And they actually got all the way, a few of the groups got all the way to a point where they built some prototypes of those pieces of furniture. So they started...
Is that the stuff we see in L-Building now?
I'm sorry?
We see that in L-Building now?
You don't see that in L-Building, but there's actually, in the Seven Bridges Steam Lab, you can see these pieces of, these are miniature models, but they actually built, a few of them are full-size now, like a stool that you can sit on, interlocking blocks. So one of the groups got all the way to actually build like a full-size version of what this might look like. So the purpose was really for them to kind of work through the design thinking process and learn all of the different tools to be able to use in their classroom. But we wanted to pick something that would be engaging for them as teachers to do that. So, and those things are all on display down at the Seven Bridges Steam Lab. So we went from the steam, the two weeks of steam, we transitioned to the Collab Academy. We had heard from the Tri-State's visit that the teachers missed. We had a Collab Academy years ago, but then there was, at the end of the Collab Academy, and we heard through the Tri-State's visit where we were focusing on our inclusive practice, special education practices around the district, we heard that the teachers were missing that professional development. So we had a two-day event that we called the Collab Academy where participants focused on kind of lifting the level of the inclusive practices that they employ in districts. We leaned on some internal experts and also brought in some experts from the outside as part of that two-day conference. The next one was literacy next, which was August. This transitioned us into August, August 5th through 7th, where we brought in three, at least three experts. We had Jennifer Cervallo, who's an author, a famous literacy author. We had Robert Dillon, who's the author of the space. And we had Angela Stockman, who wrote the book called Make Writing, where she combines maker space and writing practice together. We held this one over at Seven Bridges, and we had over 50 participants. This was opened up to K-12 folks that teach literacy, so mostly English teachers with some smattering of other special education, social studies, some other departments involved as well. So we also had a variety of task forces running throughout the summer. We had, these pictures are from the L-Building Task Force, which was a team of educators that got together to plan out the logistics of L-Building, things like the distribution of resources and also naming the spaces and things like that. So this group continued to work throughout the summer. We also had a group that worked on next-generation science standards, and there were some others that worked throughout the summer. We had a tech forum over the summer as well. A tech forum had over 80 teachers and focused on the integration of technology into our classrooms and focused on that priority of personalizing instruction through the use of technology. And we made sure that we had offerings around, like Apple offerings for our elementary, which most of the elementary schools are Apple platforms, and then Microsoft for our middle school, focusing mainly on the Microsoft Office Suite because we rolled out the new surfaces in the middle schools. So we made sure teachers had ample professional development opportunities around using that Microsoft Suite and that Microsoft Surface in our middle schools. And we've gotten very good reviews from the students about those surfaces so far. They like them a lot, is what we've heard. So then, as the summer started to wind down, we had a Chappaqua Leadership Summit that was on August 21st, where again, we opened this one to the region. We had over 60 leaders from the region join us for this one. Again, about half of them were from Chappaqua, and a little less than half were from Chappaqua, and the rest were from around the region. And we ran this very similar to Basecamp, so we had lots of different options offered by many of our internal leaders, building and district leaders, but several regional leaders stepped up and offered symposiums for us as well, which was nice. We had a full day for teaching assistants, a Teaching Assistant Academy, to make sure our teaching assistants are ready to meet the needs of students in an inclusive learning environment. So we held that one over at Seven Bridges and brought in an expert to help us with that one. New teacher launch? Go ahead.
We had three days of their new teachers, and you saw them, they're awesome.
Wow, amazing.
We did a great job with them.
And they liked it.
They did, they had a good time. They talked about, like, they put together an organizational chart from scratch, they had to figure it out as they rotated through stations. We talked about our vision, our mission, we talked about good instruction, just a really wonderful, like, jam-packed three days of a lot of learning, a lot of collaborating and connecting. And they're a great team, they bring so much positive energy.
So to squeeze every last day out of summer, the new teacher launch was the 26th, 27th, and 28th. Then we brought all of our teachers back for a superintendent conference day on the 29th, and we used the 30th, which was literally our last day of summer, for new teacher institute. So we offered a one-day institute for all of our probationary teachers that wanted to attend, to give them kind of a crash course in teaching in Chappaqua, so the instructional methods that we find to be most effective with our students in our classrooms, so they'd be fully ready to jump into the teaching and learning, which happened after that long Labor Day weekend. So I did want to mention our phonics program. We had three days of training. We invited all of our teachers that will be teaching the phonics first curriculum, which Jamie Edelman, our director of literacy, gave a presentation on that in the spring. So we're ready to roll out phonics first. We had three days of professional development for all of our K-1 teachers. All of them couldn't make it over the summer, so we just finished today, was our last day of the three days for any teachers that didn't get the training over the summer. So at this point, we have all of our kindergarten and first-grade teachers ready to, they've all been trained in phonics first, to roll it out with fidelity. We've also trained our reading teachers in the elementary schools, and we've trained our ENL teachers in the elementary schools in phonics first. So they've all had the three-day training to certify them to teach the phonics first curriculum, and we'll be rolling that out within the next couple of weeks in all of our kindergarten and first-grade classes. So I just wanted to mention our fellowships. We have three running right now. We have our graduate positioning fellows, our social-emotional learning fellows, and our active leadership and learning, or active learning and leadership fellows. So those are, those three fellowships are ongoing. They've spent several days over the summer continuing their work in the fellowships. And I also wanted to thank the CSF. CSF has, for several summers, has helped us support professional development. They actually funded a grant submitted by Warren Whitney over at Grafflin to send many of our elementary school teachers to the Jacob Burns Center to get professional development called Image, Sound, and Story, and that's going to help them include more multimedia projects. On the left side, that you can see up there, on the left side, that's actually a student sitting, she's on a green screen, but she dropped herself into a diorama that she had created, and this was actually a video. So this is some of the work that they've been doing at the elementary school level. So shout out to the CSF, thank you for your support. It helped us stretch our professional development and give some students some experience and opportunities that they wouldn't typically have with our funding. So thank you for that. We're gearing up for two superintendent conference days that come kind of back-to-back. We have one October 15th and one November 5th. I also wanted to announce that we've got Mark Brackett coming. We contracted with a very prestigious graphic design firm called Pease &amp; Townsend, and we worked together to develop this, to develop this graphic here on the right side. So save the date, if you wouldn't mind? Yeah, this is a draft, but we, I think we did, I think we did a pretty good job, right? So this is a partnership between the PTA and the district to bring Mark Brackett, you see, this has been around, we posted it in a few places now. So save the date, October 21st, we have Mark Brackett coming to do a keynote. The PTA has a business part of their meeting and a welcome from 6:30 to 7:00, then we have the keynote from 7:00 to 8:00. And then we will have opportunities for parents to break out into some choice symposium sessions. And this is a whole evening focused on social-emotional learning. So I invite the board and the whole community to save the date. And we have some presenters from inside the school district, but we also have some experts from outside in the community that will be coming in to help us run sessions. So it proves, it will prove to be a really exciting night, we're looking forward to it. So that concludes the report. Happy to field any questions if you have them. It's an exciting, exciting time with lots of hope from the team.
Wow, like, it's so impressive. It really, really is. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of all of us, that our faculty and our students get the benefit of this is just beyond fantastic. And thank you, and you do put the professional in the professional learning development because we see how well laid out this is and all the opportunities that are available to all of our instructors, and I think we're all very lucky. And we thank you very much for moving this forward. We thank the district for giving us the resources to do that. It's very impressive and so inclusive, and so it touches so many different aspects of learning. So it's really, really fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone have any questions?
I just want to echo that, really. I mean, you said it very well. I just, I just think that it was just only eight years ago that all of these new spaces were just an idea. And now that they've, it's come to pass, I just have to say that it's only thanks to all of the staff and all of the work that you've been doing, which you show in this, in your professional development plan. And I want to really thank you and the rest of the staff for doing that. I also want to thank Heidi, which I neglected to do with all of the questions that I shout out at you. I want to thank you very much as well for your plan, and I know that you and Adam work closely together. So I really just want to thank all of the staff and...
And Josh too out there, Chris, I know he's so critical in the professional development, so thank you.
And I want to thank the community as well for supporting us and passing the bond and just being supportive of our school district in general. So it's tremendous work, and, you know, I think we should all be very proud of it.
What percentage of staff do you think takes advantage of professional development in the summer?
I didn't hear the question, sorry.
What percentage of our staff takes advantage or participates professional development?
So we have a spreadsheet, and I don't have the, all the numbers at my fingertips, but I don't want to throw out a number that's not accurate, but you've seen in the, you've seen in the pictures, the vast majority will participate in a variety of activities. We had, something that I didn't even mention was we had 45 different curriculum development teams working on aligning our curriculum, scope and sequence, spending time to create rich, you know, opportunities for students. So just to think of 45 different teams, we pretty much cut across all the subject areas, almost every grade level. So there was a lot, there are very few that don't, teachers that don't participate in professional learning opportunities over the summer. It's really, it's an expectation, it's part of the fabric here that teachers really do, all educators, right? Leaders, teachers, counselors, clinicians, everybody leans in as learners. You heard that from our new teachers, that they picked up on that just within the first couple of weeks, and it's really important to us.
Yeah.
Many do.
Yeah, thank you. I actually really look forward to these presentations and seeing all the really, not just educational, but really it looks enjoyable, opportunities that we're able to provide. And yeah, I do think we should all be proud, like Vicki said. One question I did have was about the phonics first. And do you see any additional professional development in that space through the year? Or, and how do you, how are you going to keep an eye on that as it rolls out?
Yeah, so fidelity of implementation with a program like that is really important, right? These are research-based programs, and they only, and they are shown to work with data, big research studies that they collect student achievement data on. And so this is a research-based program, it works when there's fidelity to the program, right? So that's important to us. So the three-day training is the kickoff for it. There's a lot of teacher practice, guided practice within that training, where they're teaching back and forth with each other, with the trainers giving them feedback. Then we have the trainers coming back, so they're going to be coming back and working with our teachers in the classrooms to make sure, with our teachers teaching the classes and then getting feedback from the trainer. So as we build capacity in some of our turnkey people, I was in the training, Jamie Edelman was in the training, Jen Thompson, who's one of our professional developers, was in the training. We'll be able to, the principal, most of the, all of the principals spent time in the training, the elementary principals did, and assistant principals did. So we've got that level, but we also have a level of support from the phonics program where they're sending trainers throughout the year to make sure that we have fidelity to implementation. And then we're thinking about already, when we bring new staff onboard, how do we make sure that they are trained, sufficiently trained, and how do we make sure we continue to loop through with kind of primers as we, as we go along to make sure people continue to have fidelity to that program? We don't drift away from that with our own kind of spin on phonics first.
Excellent, thanks.
I just want to acknowledge that Adam always gives credit to everybody else, right? But he is the mastermind, provider of our professional learning. So thank you, Adam, for presenting in a way that's exciting for all of us to really understand what's been happening here in this district since you arrived. So thank you, Adam.
Tremendous, thank you.
Okay, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Next up, we have committee reports. I'll just start off by saying that we have a communications committee meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
First one of the season, so we can report back on that at the next meeting. Can anyone else tell us what's going on, policy, other committees?
Sure, should we do policy now or when we get to 3.2?
Yeah, we can do that.
We have two policies on the agenda, and the policy meeting has been meeting. So we will cover that later.
Yeah, let's do that. Anything, Warren?
Facilities, the next facility meeting is on October 24th at 1:00 PM.
Okay.
That'll be announced. And then the audit committee met last week, and our external auditor will be presenting on the, at the 10:15.
I couldn't hear you, sorry. I think you're, I think you moved your mic, so I'm sorry, Warren.
The audit, we may have an audit committee last week, and the external auditor, Connor Davies, will be reporting to the community and the board on the October 15th meeting.
And I have a liaison report. It's regarding a program that's sponsored by the Westchester-Putnam School Awards Association and also by Northern Westchester, Putnam-Northern Westchester BOCES. It's a program that's taking place on October 10th at 7:00 PM, and it's Promoting Mental Health for All is the title of the program. It's taking place at Tilly Foster Farm in Brewster, and it's going to be about how districts are addressing mental health issues, so it'll be an opportunity to share best practices, to hear what's going on. And it's going to include the topics of community schools model, dialectical behavior therapy, which, you know, I will find out more about there, but I assume maybe your administrators know about that, mental health first aid, and challenge success, among other things. There is going to be a panel which will be facilitated by Dr. to be a panel which will be facilitated, facilitated by Dr. Andrew Ecker, who is from the Child Study Center at Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES. And a highlight of the evening will be dinner prepared by the culinary school students.
Ah.
It's always really delicious.
Yeah, that's-
Really, truly wonderful.
That's a draft.
It's a wonderful program. And we're talking about mental health quite a bit. And so it's very apt that this is happening now. So I hope that, it's up for board members and administrators. So if you can, it would be great if you could attend, October 10th, 7:00 PM.
Is there a flyer or anything that you could pass along?
There's a flyer that was sent, but I can resend it. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'll send it.
I just want to add one thing for the facilities committee. Teresa will be contacting you for the board tour. We selected three possible dates.
Okay.
October 11th, 21st, and 22nd?
Yeah, I have two dates when I was three. So if you have anything going on specifically that I'm not available to you, I'll send it.
And we'll start early at 7:30.
Wait, I'm sorry. October 21st?
11, 21, 22. I have three dates.
I will, I will email it to you.
Okay. Great.
I already can't, I can't do the 21st.
All right. We'll figure it out. We'll email and get that straightened out. Okay. All right. We are at our public comment period. We welcome public comments. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. We also can be contacted via phone or email. And just note that subsequent to the public comment period, we may have a discussion amongst ourselves regarding any comments that are presented. Lori, go ahead. I think you should lift that up.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Lori Townsend. I have two comments on behalf of the PTA. First, again, a welcome to our new staff. I think they're lucky to be here, given all the exciting things that are happening. Toni, great job.
Yes.
By you and your team. I know the time and effort it takes to go through a thoughtful process. In addition to that, the tone that you've set in, excellence. SHABCO has been known for a long time for people doing their best, but this is really, really are building a feeling of people doing their best together. And we appreciate that. The PTA joins you in that feeling and I think that's excellent. My second comment has to do with October 2nd, which is Custodians' Day. And just to remind you that the PTA will be rolling out the red carpet for the excellent caretakers of our school, 54 of them in total, and Joe Grumondo and his team at each school. There will be meals and we will have, again, a small thank you gift for everybody. And I want to acknowledge not only the work that they've done over the summer on the facilities, but just the day-to-day upkeep and always the support that they give the PTA for all our events. And then my third comment is personal regarding the guidance presentation. I hope that you, I'm really glad that there is alignment. I think there is a lot to be gained from sharing best practices and connection, whether that's at the grade level, school level. I hope that you continue to ask questions about the high school counselor time. I was getting a read as if there were questions that time was not efficiently spent. And in 14 years of my experience, I think you've got an amazing staff here, working above and beyond. I think it's also important to ask the question Christine asked about if people don't have easy access at times when they need it, not just about courses, but when they might really need to talk to someone. I hope that you help facilitate easier access for our students. So thank you for looking into that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We are moving on to approvals and ratifications and we will get into our policy matters very shortly. Just item 3.1, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 10th, 2019 board meeting?
I move that we approve the, the minutes of the September 10th board meeting.
Second?
I will second.
Any comments or questions, discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Teresa.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 3.2, policy 2050, financial reporting. This is a first reading and adoption. It should be noticed that normally the, we are adopted after no, we adopt policies after no fewer than two readings unless the second reading is waived by majority of the board. So I think when we pass that, we will need to waive a second reading. There was a minor change. I'm wondering if, first, let's have a motion to, for a first reading and adoption of 2050, item 3.2?
We have to waive it.
We need a motion to waive.
But I, I wasn't sure if we, we did it when we, okay, never mind. Okay. So first, let's have a motion to waive a second reading prior to adoption of, don't we have to wait, we have to waive the second reading?
I thought, I thought, I thought normally we went through it.
That's, that's what I thought.
And after we go through it, then we waive the second reading.
Yes. That's, that's, right. That's why I-
Because they might-
Right. That's why, that's why I started to say, can I have a motion to, for the first reading-
Correct.
Of item 3.2, policy 2050. Motion to first reading.
I still move.
Okay.
I second.
Okay.
Maybe John can explain?
Right. I was going to say, any comments? John, maybe can explain this.
This policy, we're just looking for one change to, because right now, as is read, that we have to provide monthly financial statements for the board, which we do. And the reality is that we really shouldn't need to provide additional report just for June because we do a financial statement. So this is just to eliminate the June report. And then instead, we use the financial statements. That's the only change.
Right. That's the only change in the policy.
I move that we waive the second reading and we adopt this policy as is for first reading.
Okay. I will second-
Should we ask if anyone has questions on the-
On the reading?
Okay.
Does anyone have any-
It's very simple.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
No questions or comments? Okay.
Just to improve efficiency, is that?
Yes. It's a single line that it's, it's sort of double reporting.
Redundancy.
It's redundancy.
Okay. I second Warren.
Okay. So Warren, okay. You'll second waiving the second reading. And then, all in favor of adopting the part, the-
We're waiving the second reading.
We're waiving the second reading. And then, can I have a motion to move to adopt the policy as presented?
We have to vote, we have to vote to waive the second reading.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. This is confusing.
I moved the vote.
This is confusing me tonight. Okay.
Warren and I both wading.
Right. Because it has to be by the majority. All in favor of waiving the second reading?
Aye.
We say aye. So that's all five of us. So the second reading, reading is waived?
I move that we adopt policy 2050.
There we go. Okay. I will second adopting policy 2050 as presented, item 3.1. Any further questions or comments?
Yeah. I think I might, I think I might have screwed you up because I said, I said, I move to waive the second reading and approve the policy. That's why I was trying to do it all along.
That's all right. Now, this one was confusing, I think, for all of us tonight a little bit. That's okay. So all in favor of adopting item 3.2, policy 2050 as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We can move on to, sorry for the confusion tonight.
This next one will be a little longer.
Right. Item 3.3, this is policy 5060, education of students in temporary housing and unaccompanied youth. First reading, can I have a motion on item 3.3 for first reading?
I move 3.3.
I'll second.
Discussion. Do you want to discuss, like, maybe go forward with this?
Yes. Let me just talk about how we wound up having this policy presented tonight. And then Vicki and Warren can explain the difference between the presented policy and the current policy. So Adam had, as a part of our title grant application process, had to submit our McKinny Vento policy to state ed. And they gave us feedback that we needed to adopt their language in the boiler template that they provided to all school districts in order to ensure we were 100% compliance, compliant with the regulations. Although our policy as written was adequate, they won't accept our title grants unless we adopt their policy as written. So that's why we're here tonight with a revamped policy for your consideration.
Because we discussed this previously, right?
It is the template that they're requiring us to use in order to approve our title grants, which we need. So Vicki, Warren?
Okay. So it's confusing because it's not a redline version of something we had. And it's pretty extensive and lengthy. So just to understand what we're doing, Warren, I can go through, as quickly as we can.
Mm-hmm.
The policy. Okay.
And then we also talked about, because it's such a shift, we would just do a first reading. And then if anyone had feedback, we could bring it back to the policy before we adopt it. But the feedback really needs to be vetted with the policy committee because state ed is saying you have to, you have to adopt this as written. So I'm sorry, Vicki, go ahead.
No, it's fine. So please, please bear with me because it's just a little complicated going between the old and the new. So there is a preamble, which is a little different, but pretty much the same. The definition, first of all, the, the heading is changed from education of homeless children to education of students in temporary housing and unaccompanied youth. So the definition of students in temporary housing is the same as in the current policy, except that is all in paragraph form. But if you go, you know, word for word, you'll see that. Except for the definition of children in foster care, which was removed from this policy because it is, it's removed from the definition of homeless students because there was a new law entitled fostering student connections to address the issues of education and transportation regarding foster students. So that's out. And that's the only difference. If you go to the second page, the top of it is regarding a designator who will decide which school district student in temporary housing would be in. And this is pretty much the same as we had before. Then we move on to the definition of school of origin. Okay. So the first bullet is part of our current definition and our current policy. But what's new there is the school in which the child or youth was last enrolled. I'll explain the significance of all of that later. But that's, that part is new. Also, hang on a second. There's a designation of feeder schools and a definition of receiving schools. So, let's see. So that's new. Hang on a second. Okay. So under school of origin, the third bullet is also new. And that third bullet declares that a school of origin is also the school where the child would have been entitled to attend based on their last residence. Okay. So the significant, the significance of all this is that a homeless student can stay in the same school for the duration of their homelessness through the remainder of the school year in which they become permanently housed. But for the time that a student is considered homeless, they can stay in a school district where they were enrolled.
Previously, right.
Even, even if they move to another district, if they're still homeless.
Right. I saw that.
So if a student goes to school here and they move somewhere within a 50-mile radius, they can still come here.
And we're responsible.
And they would be bus-
And we're responsible.
Would be responsible for that. Okay. So Warren, just stop me if there's something that I'm missing.
Am I correct that we, this was on last year, so that we went through this and had some changes? Even it was just last year? And now they've changed it again?
Well, they changed it. They are refusing to accept.
Or they're requiring that we change it, excuse me.
We changed our policy. You're correct. But now they don't want our policy. They want their policy.
Okay. So there are requirements for enrollment, retention, and participation in educational programs. So that's what the next section refers to. So, so this is about the ability of a student in temporary housing or unaccompanied youth to participate in an educational program and not be restricted from that based on transportation or immunization requirements or residency requirements. And that was part of our current policy. But the new policy specifies other reasons why they can't be denied. And so that they just, they just specify other, the other requirements.
Okay.
Except, I would say immunization, we can talk, you can't deny a student access to education for immunization purposes. I think it's 14 days after they're-
It's a 14-day rule. Yeah.
Right.
Right. They still have to immunize, be immunized for 14 days.
Right.
They have 14 days to do so.
Right.
After enrollment. Okay. Hang on a second. Sorry. When I looked at this before, it seemed simpler than it does now, now that I'm here. Okay. So the section on educational services is a little bit more elaborate than the current policy. But this is about the district providing services to a homeless child to the extent that they're provided to, to residents. And, you know, it just talks about that in detail. But for all intents and purposes, that was covered in our preamble to the current policy. So I don't have to go through all of that. This is just about treating students in temporary housing equally to students who are current residents. Okay. So regarding the transportation responsibilities, the old policy only talked about the responsibilities for students who are currently residing in the district. Okay. So now we have to provide transportation to the, to a child based on the new definition of school of origin. So that's where that becomes relevant. And there is a 50-mile radius. So even if the student moves to another state, that still applies, as long as they're within the 50-mile radius. Let's see.
But if they become home, they're not no longer homeless, then they can finish out their current year or their terminal year in that building. They can go another year.
Okay. And another thing this does is it allows a child to, even if they've moved to another district, to go to a feeder school. So for instance, if the child went to Grafflin, they would be entitled to go to Bell.
To Bell. Right.
Right. And West Orchard, to Seven Bridges, and Maureen Brook, depending on where they were. So-
For the greater.
And even if they are no longer homeless, I think they're allowed to finish, they're allowed to finish their final year in a school if that's where the homelessness ceased. Or the move beyond the 50-mile radius, a move beyond the radius takes place. Okay.
I believe it's two years. It's that year. And if the next year is the terminal year in the building, they can, they can continue there.
Just to clarify, last year, because Adam looked it up quickly, we, we revised the foster care policy.
Right.
We didn't address this policy.
And so the McKinny Vento, like that came into play with the foster care policy. That's why I was, okay. That makes sense to me. Thank you.
Yeah. On the next page, access to free meals. That's new. Let's see. In the next paragraph, we have the responsibilities of the McKinny Vento liaison. And- And number one and two are the same as in our old policy. Three adds the Head Start, information about the Head Start program and early Head Start and early intervention services. But the liaison is responsible for ensuring.
But Head Start in our district is not a feeder school.
Right.
Because it's not part of our district.
Right. This is just part of the law in general, so we can't, we can't really eliminate that because we're required.
So, we have to leave it in there.
This is not.
And number four, what's new is that in our old policy, the students and parents in temporary housing would receive referrals to healthcare services, but here, they should receive referrals to dental services, mental health, substance abuse, and housing services. So, that's, I mean, our current policy says including healthcare and other appropriate services, so.
I think this spells it out more specifically.
Yeah. Number five, six, and seven, we already have in our policy. Number eight is that they're entitled to assistance in commencing an appeal on final determination regarding eligibility, which is ironic because the appeal would be against the district. But the district is required to assist them in the appeal.
Okay.
Okay. So, 10, 11, and 12 are new. If anyone has questions about that. You know, it would take a long time to read this out loud.
Right, yeah, no, so I appreciate you going through this.
This is about records being maintained of appeals, ensuring that they have, that personnel providing services to those students have professional development and other support, and ensuring that unaccompanied youth are enrolled in school, have opportunities to meet the same challenging standards, and are informed of their status as independent students. And that the school personnel are informed of the duties of the McKinney-Vento liaison. Okay. And the rest is about coordination of all services described, coordination with Title I. There's a paragraph on training and outreach to those students and their families and dispute resolution process. And there's a new paragraph on student privacy. So, the records regarding homelessness are now, are subject to FERPA and all of the laws of FERPA, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act.
Thank you for going through that, Vicki, because it's a lot. I know it's.
Yeah, so sorry, that might have been a little confusing, so.
No.
Do you want more time to go through it and ask questions?
I mean.
Does anyone have any questions?
We don't really have a lot that we can change here.
Right, it seems that way.
It's, to me, I thought we had a pretty good policy where we did a lot of this. It seems hard, or I guess some districts might have been not doing this, that they created such a lengthy policy, so prescriptive. It almost creates unfunded mandates in some ways.
Right.
Where we were doing the right thing, and now we're being forced to comply, where we had our own, just like we do a lot of things, that we go to a better level. And, like APPR, things like that. So, it's something we have to do, and not much we can do about it. Adam, I mean, you were part of our whole discussion. Do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, it does feel like the whole thing can be reduced to do the right thing by kids, right?
Right.
And it's unfortunate that we feel like we have to be tied to eight or nine pages of policy around it, but it's heartbreaking, right, when a student in any community is homeless. And certainly, we do whatever we can to work with the family. We're fortunate that we don't have many homeless students, but we do have some, some that, every year, that, for a period of time, that are homeless. And we do what we need to do to make sure that they have access to the education and other things that we can provide in the community. And the communities have always been able to wrap around those families in lots of creative ways to be able to support them through it. So, we're going to continue to do the right thing by kids, but this will allow us to access some state funds, you know, that really are federal funds that get funded through the state. And we actually support some of our intervention programs and also our professional development using those funds. So, it's important that we check the box, do the right thing by kids.
Right, and aligning it there, obviously, there are districts that weren't aligned.
Right, and that's why we have a policy like this.
We might as well have that policy and be able to do what we're, continue doing what we've been doing.
As Adam said, we had a conversation this afternoon, and, you know, we do the right thing.
Right.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Because this is so prescriptive, if there are questions or suggestions to make adjustments to the policy, if you could email Vicki, Warren, and I, and then we can discuss them with the attorney, rather than.
Right, because this isn't where we can just mark up a document and ask to add things, we can't, that's not really allowing us to do that.
And so, instead of, you know, maybe doing that right now, that might be a better process.
Sure.
Okay. So, because I've moved to this, we're just, we'll just move to accept the first reading, and then next time, we'll come back and.
Yeah, well, I think, since it's on the table.
We, on the table, so all in favor of accepting the first reading? Because we did, we moved it already.
We moved it.
So, we'll just accept, all in favor of accepting the first reading? Because I had moved it, so it just seems to make sense, so. All in favor, and then we'll have the second and final reading next. Okay.
Sorry, that was so confusing.
That's okay.
Actually, I thought you were pretty clear, Vicki.
Yeah, it was not, it was not, okay, we can move on to.
Okay, I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the.
No, no, I think, that's right, just that we.
She asked for a motion.
I had asked for a motion, my apologies.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for 4.1.
I will, okay, you second, Hillary will second. All, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for 4.2.
A second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 5.1, CSE summaries for the 2019-2020 school year reported to the board on September 25, 2019. I will move 5.1 to approve the CSE summary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Item 5.2, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the adoption of the district's comprehensive K-12 counseling plan that Heidi went through with us very thoroughly. Can I have a motion for 5.2?
I will move 5.2.
I'll second.
Any more questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Teresa, we're not going to vote on 5.3, we're going to remove it from the agenda. Okay? Do we have to make a motion?
Do we have to move to remove it from the? Yeah, okay. Can I have a motion to remove item 5.3 from the agenda? And table it for future discussion?
I move that we move 5.3 from the agenda.
I will second that, all in favor?
Are we moving or tabling it?
Removing to table it.
Moving to be moved.
It's never been on the table.
You have to remove it because it has to be revised.
Yeah, we're moving it for, to.
Or we could table it until it's revised. Whatever you want to do.
I just, we removed it from the agenda, that's okay, because we're not in a voting tonight.
Did you vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
We did vote, but that's okay. I know, I thought we did. Item 5.4, be it resolved that the board approves a letter of agreement for provision of evaluation and therapy service with All About Kids for the purposes of providing direct therapy, evaluation, screening, consultations, and other additional services available for students at rates, for students at rates per attachment A. So, this agenda effective July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2020, and authorize the superintendent to execute this agreement. Can I have a motion for 5.4?
And then 5.4?
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I move, we read, 5.5 was read into the agenda from the president's report, so I'd like to have a motion for the bid resolution under 5.5 as presented in the president's report.
I will move on item 5.5. As presented.
As presented.
I second that.
Any additional questions?
I think any items that will help our children, our students, be safer on the athletic fields, or is a good move by the district. And I thank Jason Seemack for doing the research to get us the right equipment.
Yep. I agree, thank you, Warren. All in favor of item 5.5?
Aye.
Item 5.6, I'd like a motion to approve the letters to parents as presented in the president's report.
I move 5.6.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 6.1, facilities, be it resolved that the Board of Education approve CCSD RFP 2019-7 Audio-Visual Design Services for steam building in Lower Al at Horace Greeley, and recommends awarding the contract to KV L Audio-Visual Services in an amount not to exceed $37,525. Can I have a motion for 6.1?
I will move 6.1, they're recommending the audio-visual design services for the steam building.
I'll second 6.1.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
6.2, be it resolved that the board authorizes the board president to execute a following change order. This has to do with security at Bell Middle School. Whoops, excuse me. A change offer, excuse me, order related to demolishing, removing stone wall and foundation due to a discovered oil tank, which had to be removed and replacing the stone wall and said foundation. So, it increased our contract time, and the amount of the increase is $58,493.49. I will move 6.2, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions?
Has this work already been done?
No, we have to execute the change order because it's over the amount, correct? Yeah, it's not, it's not, we're not acknowledging the change order here. We're asking for approval to execute the change order. Right.
No, I understand why, but, okay. I just, I misunderstood something in terms of the building. I thought that they had already taken care of it. So, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Holly, they took the oil tank out.
Yes, but that's how they discovered. They discovered it and they have to do, yeah.
Oil tank's not missing.
No, okay, thank you, Christine.
All in favor of 6.2? Financial, 7.1.
Could we take these together?
Yeah.
7.6, 7 something.
Yeah, right, I was just checking to see which ones. I'd like to move 7.1, 7.2, 7.3, 7.4, 7.5, 7.6. I'd like to move them all together. These are all financials, status report, proposed architectural agreement in regard to our new buildings. Can we do, just a question, though, if we're moving, these are separate.
I have a question regarding 7.4.
Yeah, they're different. I would like to, I would like to actually.
But we haven't done a consent agenda yet.
No, we were, we were just talking about that. I want to separate out, I think we can move 7.1 through 7.3 together. Or we could just take it, what?
Just take them in.
What's happening is that these are typically in the fives.
I was just, I am a little confused here, yes.
These are typically in the fives, so we, maybe we should do them one by one.
I think 7.2 and 7.3 would normally be over.
Yeah.
In the fives, okay. Let's just, let's just go, and we can group together. I'm going to group 7.4 and 7.5 together, that's okay. 7.1, let's just go back. Motion for 7.1 to accept the revenue status report from July 1, 2019, to August 31, 2019. Can I have a motion for 7.1?
I move 7.1.
I'll second 7.1, all in favor?
Aye.
7.2, be it resolved that the board approves the proposed agreement from KGND Architects or Professional Services to assist the Chapakwa Central School District with design and development of a new boiler plant building to service the Horace Greeley Gym and a new security office in the amount of $55,000 for architectural, mechanical, electrical, structural phases, and other exclusions, and authorize the board president to execute this agreement. Can I have a motion for 7.2?
I move 7.2.
A second. I do have actually one question with 7.2. When they are discussing, it's a new boiler plant building, is it, is it, can you just?
Yes, I can explain.
Okay, thank you.
This is what happened last year, remember, the board approved the emergency capital project because our steam pipe broke right outside Greeley. So, right now, we came up with a new design. So, the gym originally was tied to the entire building. Now, the gym is going to be standalone. So, that's safer and easier to maintain. So, we are designing a new heating system just for, for the gym.
Okay.
And this is the design, the execution, and also attached to this, Joe Gomano came up with an idea that we also attached to that a guard booth. So, because right now, we already have a guard sitting inside, but now we can move the guard to be the outside, so this is the plan.
Right, so it's a plant, like we're saying, that might be missing a T, boiler plant building?
Or I think you should say that.
Boiler plant.
Boiler plant.
It's a boiler plant.
It's just a plant.
Oh, okay.
I think the word building is, maybe shouldn't be there.
Right, so that was my, that was my question, is it?
It's a mistake.
It's a plant.
So, it's a boiler plant, we can get rid of building. It's not a boiler plant building, that's what confused me a little bit.
It's a plant, it's a boiler plant.
Yes, boiler plant.
Okay. Right, so, can I have a motion to approve 7.2 as amended? We can strike that word "building," Teresa?
No, actually, no, on the note from KGND, it's a boiler plant building.
Oh, okay. I knew something was not right there.
Yeah, so the T is what's missing.
Okay, thank you for checking that out. So, let's just, can I have a motion to approve item 7.2 as amended? But it's boiler, it's just adding a T.
So, this is a boiler plant?
A boiler plant building.
What does the word "building" indicate, then, in that sentence? I'm confused.
Is it in case? I'm assuming it's in case.
There will be, no, there will be an additional building. What happened is that at the entrance place, where the bike racks are, that's the place that's going to, we're going to have a building, and the boilers will go in there, and next to it, there will be a guard booth. So, ultimately, there will be additional structure.
Ah, okay.
But it will be attached?
Yes.
How big will that be?
It depends how large is the boiler, for example. So, right now, we still need to go through the design stage.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about confusing.
Boiler plant building.
So, it's, so it should just read development of a new boiler plant building?
Building, yes.
Since that's what it is in the architectural, thank you for checking that, Holly. Okay, so, may I have a motion to approve 7.2 as amended?
I will. Second.
All in favor? What?
Vicki and Holly?
Holly and, Holly moved.
Yes.
Item 7.3, be it resolved that the board approves proposed agreement with KGND to provide continual additional, continued additional oversight services for the district-wide security projects for four weeks in September at a cost of $6,600, and authorizes the board president to execute this agreement. I will move 7.3, can I have a second?
Second.
Let me just add one thing, so this proposal.
It's not, they have to, did we, are we up for discussion?
Your second.
Okay, all right, sorry, John, go ahead.
Okay, so, this proposal is actually tied to the 6.2. Because of all these changes, and there's a delay, and there's more work, and therefore KGND came up with this proposal.
Okay. Thank you, John. All right, all in favor of item 7.3?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to take 7.4 and 7.5 to. I'd like to take 7.4 and 7.5 together, these are two consent judgments, one in the amount of, it's 7.4, in the amount of $64.94 and $0.99, the number 7.5, item 7.5 is in the amount of $9,872.16. Again, both are consent judgments to different parties. I have a motion for 6, 7.4 and 7.5.
7.6 is also a consent judgment. I just saw.
Well, that one's different because it's a payment...
Yeah, you know, it was a little different with the payment thing, so I just, that's okay. Can I have a motion for 7.4 and 7.5?
I'll move 7.4, 7.5.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 7.6, this is also a consent judgment for refund payment in the amount of $37,84 to the Chapakua Arcade LLC for the second half of the school and library taxes. At the time of the approval of, there was a previous consent judgment on January 9th, 2019, only the first half of the school and library taxes had been paid by the petitioner. We have a motion for 7.6?
I move 7.6.
Second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Item 7.7, resolution, this is the bond, so do we have to read this specifically? We do, we have to read it exactly in a roll call, right. Item 7.7, resolution of the Chapakua Central School District, New York, adopted September 25th, 2019, amending the refunding bond resolution heretofore adopted on July 10th, 2019. The Board of Education of the Chapakua Central School District, New York, the district hereby resolves by the favorable vote of a two-thirds vote of all members of said Board of Education as follows. Section A, Section 15 of the refunding bond resolution of said district duly adopted by the Board of Education on July 10th, 2019, entitled Refunding Bond Resolution of the Chapakua Central School District, New York, adopted July 10, 2019, authorizing the refunding of all or a portion of certain outstanding refunding serial bonds of said district, stating the plan of refunding, appropriating an amount not to exceed $24,605,000, therefore authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $24,605,000, refunding serial bonds of the district to finance said appropriation and making certain other determinations. All is now amended to read as follows. Section 15. Wait, all relative thereto is now amended to read as follows. Section 15, this bond resolution shall take effect immediately, and the district clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish the foregoing resolution in summary, together with a notice attached in substantially the form prescribed by Section 81.00 of the law in the Journal News, a newspaper having a general circulation in the district and hereby designated the official newspaper of said district for such publication. Section B, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Section C, the amendment of Section 15 of the refunding bond resolution set forth in Section A of this resolution shall in no way affect the validity of the liabilities incurred, obligations issued, or action taken pursuant to said bond resolution, and all such liabilities incurred, obligations issued, or actions taken shall be deemed to have been incurred, issued, or taken pursuant to said refunding bond resolution as so amended.
Can I repeat that?
Right, can I repeat that? Can I have a motion to move item 7.7? We will then take the vote.
Yes.
I will second.
I will second.
I will second, item 7.7. Is there any discussion? I didn't know if John should perhaps mention what this is, and...
Yes, this is, the board approved the refinancing of the, the 2002 bond, the $56 million bond that was passed to build seven bridges and renovate Bell and build an extension at Rowan Brook and build additional buildings here at Greeley. So at the time, we borrowed $56 million. And in 2010, we refinanced that bond, and at the time, we saved six, over $6 million. And so now 10 years has passed, so we had the opportunity to refinance this again. And the timing was right, because the rates are going down, and at the time when we asked the board to pass the resolution in July, we also anticipated that Fed Fund rates would go down again, and since then, it dropped another 25 basic points. So at the time when we put the resolutions together, the, the bond council gave us the resolutions indicated that we had to have two newspapers, but we usually just do one, so we only advertising one. So this is to correct that, to, to say that there's only one newspaper advertisement.
Right, so it's to correct the advertisement and the refunding, which I think would be helpful to say is saving us quite a bit of money.
Yes, we, we had good news. So going through this process, we have to have move these rating review again, which we did, and so our AAA bond rating was reaffirmed again. And so today's actually the pricing, and we went up very aggressively, the underwriter was very aggressive, even this morning, we, we decided that we want to go for another 10 extra basic points, which we got. So the aggregate savings, you know, came in already, and we are saving additional 2.1 million. So altogether, when you look at this whole bond, through the life, we'll save over $8 million.
Right, so that's worth a little extra reading for us for tonight.
Thank you, thank you so much.
So thank you all for being, and thank you for taking care of this.
Just the timing was good.
So we need a roll call vote here, because, excuse me?
Yes, please.
Right, so...
Teresa, will you call everyone's name?
Right.
That's okay. Aye? I say, yes.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Notice of future meetings. Item 8, our next meeting is Tuesday, October 15th at 7:30 PM. There will be an audit approval, assessment, view of the 2018-2019 academic year, and that will be here at the Academic Commons, and our next meeting after that is Wednesday, October 30th at 7:30 PM at Haris Greeley High School. We will be going into executive session now to, excuse me? Yes, okay. So I would like, excuse me?
I move that we adjourn to executive session at 9:46 PM to discuss security.
And the employment history of particular person as well.
Second?
I will second, all in favor of moving to executive session?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned for the public meetings, we will not be coming back, thank you.